Good morning. Today is the thirty-first day of Halloween.
Pretty good.
Right. The time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Sandra Robbins, Court Administrator.
I don't know who that is.
Rob Batiste, Ex-Idaho.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Rob Fisher, Deputy County Prosecutor.
Noah Hill, Lady County Attorney.
Brad Smith, Treasurer's Office.
Kevin Taylor, Treasurer's Office.
I was the Department of Communication.
IT guy.
Trent Triple Clerk.
Okay. Bob Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one change to the agenda.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to remove item V eight C fifty-six, tax cancellation for Woodland Terry, parcel number R five one one three seven five zero zero two zero.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we have a number of volunteer boards we're going to be reappointing. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the volunteer board reappointments as listed on the agenda with the term of expirations as specified.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to new business. We have a resolution. I'll open the resolution on, open the public hearing on resolution number two nine three two. A resolution authorizing expenditure of opioid funds for the approval of purpose of supporting Ada County Treatment Courts. Is there a, any discussion on it? Would you like to say anything, Bob?
We just wanted to say thank you for, for the board's ongoing support of the program. We're really excited working with operations and procurement. It's moving right along and Alex, our project manager, keeps saying end of July for moving dates, so.
End of July? Is that what it's gonna be, end of July? Okay. Alright, is there any other discussion or any other comment?
That is exciting. It's very.
That is exciting, you bet. Alright, if not, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine three two and accept the motion.
I move to approve resolution twenty-nine thirty-two as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving right along, we have a procurement, opening a bid number twenty-four zero zero four. ARPA Ada County Green Belt Pathway. This is something that's been in the works for a long time. I'm glad we're finally getting a bid on it.
We're moving to the construction phase of this.
Yeah, that's great.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before you this morning, it is the opening of bid two four zero zero four, the ARPA Ada County Green Belt Pathway Project twenty-two forty-four, and NOAA has our bron fly cure system queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
I'm ready.
Alright.
Let's go.
So, on this project, we received five bids, so that's pretty good. At the pre-bid, we had seven contractors show up, and out of the seven, five submitted bids.
You're gonna have to get better clothes, Ray Show. Okay.
So, NOAA is gonna open this up, but we'll open up a spreadsheet to show that we have the name of the bidder. There'll be the bid amount, and there will also be a two hundred thousand dollar contingency on this project that will be added into the total bid amount.
Did it?
I might have, I don't know. Usually a score order list pops right up, and that is not an option for me. Let's see.
You wanna get IT over to open?
Maybe. Ah, score.
Alright, yeah.
Where it goes.
Okay.
Alright, so the spreadsheet will be popping up here in just a second. There we have it.
Can we see that? Okay.
Uh, yeah, let's start with the always scroll over with that icon there. Okay, so our first bidder is Brikon, and they have a total bid amount of one hundred, excuse me, one billion nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. Our second bidder is Idaho Site Works, and they have a total bid amount of two million, two hundred sixty thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars. Our third bidder is Knife River Corporation with a total bid amount of two million, two hundred sixty thousand, sixty dollars. Uh, our fourth bidder is La Gaviere Incorporated. They have a total bid amount of two million, three hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars. And our fifth bidder is Stroth General, and they have a total bid amount of one million, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars.
That's a big spread.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, we'll go through each one of these bids, make sure that they've met all their administrative requirements. Um, and we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the November, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three open business meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I'll accept the motion.
I move to table the award and bid two four zero zero four. ARPA Ada County Green Belt Pathway Project twenty-two twenty-four to
November seventh.
November seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Okay. Uh, well, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Go through those, those bids in great detail.
We will. Thanks so much.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we next have licenses up. We have three new licenses and one, two license transfers. I will accept the motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three new licenses, two new license transfers, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we are lucky to have our distinguished clerk today, Mr. Trent Triple. I'm sure he's got a great report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Election mode. That's what we're in right now.
Like the tie.
Thank you. Um, twenty thousand absentee ballots were sent out. Uh, we have received about eight thousand of them back so far, about a forty percent return. Uh, it's a higher than, slightly higher than normal rate of return. We're expecting eighty-five to Yeah, we're expecting about eighty-five to ninety percent of those to come back, which will again set a new record for municipal election in November. So.
Pass the deadline date for requesting?
They have. Twenty-seventh was the deadline to request. Um, so now we're just waiting on returns to come back that we sent out.
Are we still getting a lot of early voting?
Uh, we are. Early voting is trending moderately higher than it was four years ago during the same municipal election. Uh, we're close to seven thousand votes so far as of Friday, no, as of yesterday. So, close of yesterday, we had about seven thousand votes. Four more days of early voting at the city halls as well as our mobile voting site. We're expecting somewhere around twenty-five thousand votes, uh, twenty-five to maybe thirty thousand votes cast before Tuesday, when we have Election Day, which would be a pretty high turnout for this type of election.
Are you able to track city by city, like which cities have increases, which don't?
Uh, well, we know, um, we know locations, which ones are having higher rates of turnout, but that's not necessarily tied to people that live in that city. So, someone could be voting at Boise City Hall if they're taking their break for work and stuff, but um, I don't know of the demographic breakdown by area of who's having higher turnout rates. The demographics of age are, sixty to seventy-five year olds are showing up in force. Uh, they're more than forty-five percent of the people that are voting right now.
Three cheers for the boomers.
That's right. Um, so, the other thing that's of note, uh, I, I hope it's a blip on the radar, but we have been inundated with campaign finance complaints. It seems that the campaign finance is being weaponized.
That's nothing new.
Well, to this level it is.
How many complaints would we receive?
We've received probably ten, and many of them are very energetic about, you know, sense being on a, on a report.
Can I predict that most of them are from Eagle?
Uh, some of them are from Eagle. A lot of them are associated with the, um, Westlake School District trustees, so.
Already about us?
None of them are about you. It's about people on the candidate.
The bond.
Uh, not, not on the bond, no.
Well, 'cause bond, there's not a requirement for that.
No, this is, uh, you know, people trying to disqualify their opponents um, because they say they're doing something illegal on campaign finance. The intent of campaign finance is transparency. It's not a disciplinary thing to punish people. It's to allow the citizens to see where the money's coming from to support the candidate, so.
And you've had to investigate these, or do you?
We have, and all of them are unfounded. Um, uh, some of them are legit in that there's, there is some media, new, uh, print media that is not having the paid by, uh, things on the bottom of them, and, and it's a simple fix that people just weren't aware that that needed to be on there. Those types of things. So, we're, we're notifying people. They're making amendments.
I thought that only applied if it's, if it's not obvious who paid for it.
It is. Yeah. But that's the kind of complaints that we're getting, and the energy and emphasis behind them are demanding us that we take these people off the ballots, which we can't and we won't. Um, so, it's, it's just something that a lot of our folks are having to deal with that they normally don't have to deal with, and so.
Well, what, uh, what are you predicting are going to be, is going to be the turnout now? Because I don't, we've, we've gone from thirty to forty percent. You think it'll be as high as forty percent turnout?
I don't think it'll be as high as forty percent personally. I think thirty to thirty-five percent is a good mark. I think we'll, we'll have probably a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand. If we get more than that, I'd, I'd, I'd be surprised.
Hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah. What I think we're seeing is a shift of people voting on Election Day to early voting and absentee, so um, you're just gonna see more people as the convenience of it to be able to come out and vote rather than try to come out on Election Day, so.
Well, unfortunately, we do have a very secure, uh, system of absentee voting and early voting.
We're very happy with it.
Yeah.
We're having a, a press briefing this afternoon, actually inviting all the news media and print media to come to elections, and we're gonna walk them through our process prior to our LNA on Thursday, uh, where they're also invited to come see us test our equipment. So, hopefully, through those efforts and our social media efforts, I think the vast majority of people here in Idaho are comfortable with our system.
Is that LA, is that where the candidates can come and?
Can, anybody. It's open to the public. Candidate, media, general public, they can all come see our equipment and watch us test it to make sure that it's, uh, doing what it's supposed to do.
Again, back to what you're saying, transparency.
Yeah. There's no secrets.
What time is it?
Uh, on Thursday, that's at two o'clock.
You know, have any idea how many people, how many voters in Ada County only have the jail bond on their ballot?
Uh, a handful. It's very small. It's only unincorporated that aren't in a city, aren't in a school district.
Or a, or a fire district.
Or a fire district, cemetery district. Uh, you know, I, I bet I could, I'm not willing to guess, but it's a very small number.
Are you seeing an uptick in, um, um, absentees or early voting in unincorporated areas that don't deal with mayor or city council?
No. It's just across the board. One thing, we're, we're trying to condition folks to go to the website to see what's on their ballot.
Sure.
I even made the mistake. I was going through our, our, our election gun, and I'm like, I'm gonna vote for that person, and I'm gonna vote for that person, and I'm gonna vote for that person, and then I pull up my ballot, and I realize I don't get to vote for any of those people because I don't live in that school zone. Uh, so, uh, you know, pulling up that sample ballot on our website when you plug in your address is very helpful for folks to be able to see, oh, this is exactly what's gonna be on my ballot. Uh, everyone's gonna have the jail bond. Most people that live in cities are, well, everyone that lives in a city is gonna have a, a city mayor and a district council possibly, and, uh, school districts will be on there as well. But they'll be in zones, so.
There's only two cities that have districts.
Yes. But city councils for like Kuna and others will have it on there.
Yeah, but they're at large.
Yep.
Uh, I was at, I, I remember, we're a member of the Treasury of the Partnership, and, uh, yesterday there was some discussion that, um, not all counties have submitted their, their, uh, valuation for certification to the state, and they're, and the state might be having some issues with getting the information that we need to prepare the tax bill. Have you heard anything about that?
I have heard this weekend, e- even, even us, there was a couple of parcels that, uh, we had to fix in order to make those things managed. So, yesterday, we sent an updated evaluations to the, the state. Unfortunately, Ada County is so large that, uh, the rest of the evaluations across the state sometimes rely on us getting our stuff in. Uh, but I have heard other, other folks are struggling to get theirs in as well, so.
They seem to indicate yesterday there was as high as twenty counties hadn't got their valuations correctly submitted to the state.
That, that could be, that could be possible. That wouldn't surprise me.
If that's the case, they might, they might miss their November sixth deadline.
Mm-hmm. I know the state's been working long hours.
Good for them.
On weekends. They're earning their pay this time.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot to House Bill two ninety-two because that's a complicated issue, and the counties have had to figure it out.
It, it is, and we have.
Well, we have. I don't know, there must be twenty-some odd counties that have.
It, you know, for us, uh, we have a staff of, you know, ten people, and assessors have plenty of people working on it. In most counties, it's the clerk.
Yeah.
Uh, and one assessor.
Well, yeah, because they're dealing with a smaller amount of weight.
And the complications of it are, are hard. There, I've sensed that from a lot of the, the folks around the state.
Clark County has about seven hundred people live in Clark County, something like that.
Seven hundred ninety-six.
So, oh, excuse me. Well, I, I knew it was in that, in that range, and, and in some counties, the federal government owns, uh, about eighty percent of the properties, ninety. I think Custer's up to the size of ninety percent, I believe.
Yeah, just for, for the people who may or may not be listening in. In order for the state tax commission to parcel out under two ninety-two, all the state has to have their data in so that they can parcel that money out equitably, and so that's why all of us are going to have to wait.
That's why it's, that's why they may be late party in their, in their November sixth deadline.
So, everybody will have to wait. All the counties will have to wait.
And all the way taxpayer will have to wait.
Right. Yes, because that's gonna go directly to the taxpayer.
That's right.
We hope that's not the case.
We hope that's not the case. We'll, we'll be hoping for the best. Do you have any, any additional information for us?
That is it. Again, this next week will be in, uh, high election mode. We'll be working through the weekend, getting ready for the Election Day on Tuesday.
I read that Canyon County added a few precincts. They have a fraction of the number of precincts, precincts that we have.
I thought they eliminated some in their last, uh.
Well, they just add, they just added a few, I saw, but.
They've had a lot of consolidated polling places, and I think they're trying to spread it back out, but they're, they are challenged right now in a lot of ways.
I've heard that.
Precincts.
Yes, yes. Well, anyway. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, did we ever get the Claims Journal? We didn't get the Claims Journal. Alright, we'll pass on that one then. Uh, we have the personnel actions.
I'll, uh, move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda. That summary sheet remained on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, we didn't do the Claims Journal, did we?
We did not do the Claims Journal because we don't have it yet.
Okay.
So, we can't do it. Okay, um. We have the Deputy Assessor. Is that your title?
Chief Deputy Assessor.
Chief Deputy, excuse me for your chief. We got the Chief Deputy Assessor. Okay. Alright, Brad, how you doing?
Pretty good.
You got a lot of good stuff for us?
Yeah, I just like to follow up on Trent. I know their sample ballot online. I love that tool. I mean, same thing. I go out there thinking, oh, who do I get a vote for? And I'm like, oh, this is pretty limited, but it's a great tool. I print it out, and, uh, that way I can check it out prior to the election and know exactly who I'm voting for instead of all these names running through my mind, so. I love their website and the ability to just go in there, pick your address. It's really cool.
So, you'd be considered an educated voter.
Try to be.
Well, good.
So.
Good.
Yeah, in regards to our office, uh, we got seventy tax cancellations that are coming up. Um, these are, this is kind of our last push for the home state exemption where people apply after the property roll. So, this is our last push where they're gonna be reflected on the tax bill, and then the one going back to twenty-one and twenty-two. Looks like Mr. Van, that's a characteristics error where our square footage was too high, so we're making adjustments for that. And, um, we find those, we're getting actually ready to send out twenty thousand survey cards, and we send them out during our reappraisal. It's a great tool. Basically, people get postcards, this ability to log, and they put a PIN number in, and they can review their characteristics that we have on the properties such as square footage, bedroom, bathroom, and to make sure that our data is correct. Because if we're not, if we're using the wrong square footage or whatever, I mean, our taxes are gonna be wrong. So, we're trying to have the most accurate information from a transparency view. I mean, this is the best way we've found to really kind of put it in front of the people.
Okay. Are you following that, uh, late our case that's been appealed to the State Supreme Court on, on the home state exemption?
Yes.
And where, where's that at? Have they had a hearing yet?
I don't think it's been a, I didn't think it was officially, I know they asked, I didn't think it was official that the tax commission had filed to the Supreme Court.
Oh, they have not.
I think it's still, I could, I haven't heard the latest, but, uh, I don't think it had officially been signed up. But yeah, we're, we are slightly involved. There's amicus briefs that we're looking at, uh, joining on with IEC and stuff, so. Obviously in favor of probation.
Well, yeah.
So.
Yeah, we are. Yeah. Alright, you got anything else for us?
You guys have a great Halloween. Get over to HR at two o'clock.
Ah.
Let me hand him out some candy.
Oh, okay. Alright, well, thank you. We'll take, uh, we'll take, I'll accept the motion. I want to clarify again, these are, uh, they're identified as tax cancellations, but they're not really tax cancellations. They're just an adjustment to people's taxes.
Under the law, we require
Under law, they're called tax cancellations.
Use the term cancellation.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for twenty-twenty-one, one tax cancellation for twenty-twenty-two, and sixty-eight tax cancellations for twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we have the, uh. We have the Treasurer's Office.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the Treasurer's Office to provide an update.
Are you the Chief Deputy Treasurer?
Chief Deputy Treasurer.
Okay, thank you.
And so, just kind of following up with, uh, what Clerk Triple said is, uh, we're working really hard. Uh, the Clerk's Office, we've been working with them, the Assessor's Office, uh, currently, we are testing the, um, system changes that, uh, have been made with, uh, IT to manage the, uh, new bill, HB two ninety-two. Um, we're functioning under the, uh, mindset of we're gonna get the, uh, information we need from the tax commission. At this time, we just don't know.
Always hope.
And, and so, we're optimistic about that, and, and so, we've been very busy. Everybody's been working really hard. Uh, testing, we're, we have a training environment in our property tax system, and so, we're testing payments today on there. We've applied the charge. We've been looking to make sure the HTR and ATR and the other legislative changes that have happened are working properly in the system. And we drill down into the parcel level to make sure that we can actually see that, trace it out, make sure the amounts are correct, the dollar amounts, the calculations, so, uh, that's been our primary focus this week, and it'll continue to be, uh, until we move forward and, and actually apply the charge in the real production instance of the property tax system.
Mm-hmm. Well, good.
And that's about it for an update for us.
That's about it. We'll get a lot of updates from you in other places. We just, we just reviewed all of our, our investment portfolio yesterday, and that's, you, you, you folks have done a great job there.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Some, some organizations benefit from an uptick in interest rates, and some organizations don't. We benefit.
That's right.
Basically. Alright. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any questions to the Treasurer? Thank you, thank you. Okay, um. We have the approval of the minutes. Uh, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have one interim event at Expo Idaho. Okay, is there a motion?
Is that, is that the reason why?
It's the kids' fair. It's the kids' fair, okay.
I, I move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we have, uh, Parks and Waterways Education and Event Center. We have two events. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the two Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we have twenty-six agreements to approve. Most of these are renewals. Some of them are not. Is there any questions or discussion on any of these agreements? Hearing no, uh, discussion, I'll accept a motion on the twenty-six agreements listed on the agenda.
Twenty-six, exactly, so there's a A through Z.
Yep.
I, I move to approve the twenty-six agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on the, appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we have the, uh, indigent items. I'll accept the motion on the indigent items.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Alright, unless there's, is there any further business that needs to be brought before the board?
Commissioner.
Yes.
Um, about the Claims Journal, are we gonna table it to tomorrow, or did you want to authorize payment on the Claims Journal?
We don't have it yet, right?
Do you want to table it till tomorrow?
I think we should if we, uh, if we don't have it.
Okay. Just need a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, table the motion, uh, the Claims Journal until tomorrow, correct?
Yeah, on November first.
November first. Twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, we don't have any other business then. We will have the Claims Journal to review before tomorrow, correct? Alright, good enough. We'll do that. We're adjourned. Thank you, thank you. Go get your dog here, huh? Okay, uh, good enough. Today is October thirty-first. The time is, uh, nine thirty-two. No, nine thirty-two, yeah. The, uh, the board is in session, uh, acting as the Board of, uh, Ada County Emergency Medical Services District, for the, uh, weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us in the room.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
I T guy. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Um, would you like to table this claims journal till tomorrow as well since we do not have it?
We don't have it? Yes.
And that's, other than that, I'm not aware of anything else.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to table the claims journal till the first day of, uh, November.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, uh, table the E M S claims journal as listed on the agenda until tomorrow, November first, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay, we have, uh, some personnel actions. I'll accept a motion on personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and let the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the minutes up. I'll accept a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Alright. Alright, now we have an agreement. An agreement, uh, an amendment to a renewal agreement between Emergency Medical Services District and Stryker Medical for technical service support of the Lucon devices. What's a Lucon device?
It's actually a Lucas device, uh, Mr. Chair, but, uh, that's our, our, uh, machines that do CPR. Yeah, they, uh, they do a very efficient job with CPR and we'll do that for about forty minutes on a battery charge. We carry multiple batteries, so.
That's what you were describing to us the other day, right?
I think so, yeah.
Alright. Well, good. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the one agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, now we get the E M S update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, good morning. Uh, not a huge update today. I did have a conversation after our, uh, access elected official meeting on Thursday with Representative Tanner. Uh, and he and I will be going down to meet with Medicaid Director on November fifteenth. So, uh, and the other thing that I'm working with him and the state on is that idea of moving the E M S Bureau out of, uh, Department of Health and Welfare. Uh, he, he would like to go down to L S O right away and get a bill written. But we're still trying to figure out exactly where they would live if it wasn't D H W.
How that would, uh, work.
Uh, we had a, uh, meeting Friday afternoon with, uh, Elke Schatolik with D H W, uh, and the Bureau Chief and, um, you know, they, they're hesitant to move the Bureau out of D H W, but they also recognize that if it is under D H W, they're probably not getting any more funding because that's what has been told. And so, one of the things that they, they have asked for is one, uh, could this fund be placed somewhere else like under I O E M in a trust that where the money wouldn't be going to D H W and be going straight to E M S districts or, um, the other idea would be, uh, actually moving the, the Bureau under another department like I E M, so. Uh, but they, uh, it sounds like they, they wanna get a meeting with J F A C to hear from J F A C about what the issues are and, and get some idea of what J F A C thinks they should do and maybe where they should live, so.
Wasn't there talk of putting that in a statewide emergency, uh, organization under the military?
Yeah, under I O E M, under Brad Ritchie. Um, and it sounds like, uh, you know, there is at least one other state that does it that way. Uh, most states, I think Wayne said twenty-seven states or maybe it was forty states, I can't remember. But the vast majority of the states actually house their E M S Bureau under Department of Health and Welfare, under Public Health. But, uh, that may not be the way to do it in Idaho. So, um, the, the one question that is still sort of out there is, uh, I, I have heard from a number of sources that General Garsack isn't really fond of the idea of moving the Bureau under I O E M because it's part of the military division. And I think for years he has pushed to try to make the military the military and not have a civilian di- division recording to the military division. But there's a constitutional issue where the governor, governor can only have so many departments that report to him. And so they can't create this division of public safety unless there was a constitutional amendment. And obviously that's a completely hill, different hill to climb there. So it's a matter.
Much longer process.
Oh, yeah. Uh, so it's a matter of just trying to find the, the right place to put it. And maybe that public safety division can live under I O E M, even if it's under the military division. But that would be taking, um, the E M S Bureau, the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, what is called E S T or Emergency Services Training, which is a statewide fire training agency, would be put under there, uh, and I'm missing one agency. But that, that's kind of the idea of creating that division of public safety. But that, that conversation is ongoing, so.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad they're thinking this through better than they did with the Arcan situation. If they don't, just simply pass a piece of legislation and try to figure out how to make it work.
Right, yeah. That is true.
Well, they're still trying to figure that out, aren't they?
Yep. I was, I was interesting to hear, uh, Commissioner Tanner in that role, you know, explain what they were trying to do in the meeting last week. He, he was Eagle Fires representative in our access meeting. And, uh, he talked about it.
Yep. Yeah, well, I thought I read, uh, or I saw somewhere where there was, uh, an E M S that was trying to consolidate, you know where that's going?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's up in Valley County.
Yeah.
Uh, and from what I understand, they're trying to actually deannex that portion of Tamarack that is, uh, close to Adams County because Adams County can actually get there closer. And by doing that, uh, it actually, the new law that, that changed, uh, the E M S districts in twenty twenty would then take that, uh, away from the Board of County Commissioners and they would create a new board like a fire district. And so they would have an E M S district board with three, uh, three elected, uh, officials, much like a fire district. Initially, they were saying they could change their levy with a simple majority vote, but I saw in the news last night, it's a super majority. Uh, so they, they, it wasn't quite that simple for them. So, uh, yeah, that was a fairly long story on Channel Seven that I heard last night.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty good coverage, actually, of, of the issue.
Yep.
Which was u- useful.
So we'll see, uh, you know, we're, we're kind of watching to see what happens, uh, up there to see if they were successful with their, their levy change or not because, uh, you know, probably i- in the next few years, after we see the impact of G M T money, that may be something I'll be coming back to to this board asking if we can make an attempt because, uh, um, our, our levy is the lowest in the state. And we have more property value than the rest of the state or than, not than the rest of the state, but ours is much higher.
Than any other county.
Than any other county. Uh, but, uh, it still doesn't quite get us to where we need to be with the growth that we've seen in the county. We just can't keep up with it.
So is tonight gonna be a big night for you guys?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Davidson, Halloween is usually a pretty big night. Um, I'll be down on Harrison Boulevard handing out candy to the kids. We have that station right there off of, uh, at Seventeenth and Ridin' Bob, right off of Harrison. So we back the ambulance up and bring the gurney out and that's where we have the candy and to start handing it out to kids. Um.
Give me skeletons.
Well, we do have one. We have one at, uh, at Benjamin. That's not a bad idea to take that thing down.
Put on the gurney.
You know, in years past, when I was a battalion chief, uh, I would actually, there were so many DUIs that occurred on Halloween. And, uh, there would be a line in the Sallyport of the jail for people waiting to blow in the breathalyzer or get a blood draw. And I remember at times just parking in the garage with a pillow and staying in the, the battalion chief vehicle, leaning the seat back and try to catch a few Z's between blood draws because we would do so many on Halloween. And it's always, uh, quite the scene because you get all these people in costume and they're waiting to get charged with, for their DUI, so. It's an interesting night for sure. There, it's, uh, Halloween, uh, the Fourth of July and Saint Patrick's Day seem to be the
Those are the days.
The crazy days for, for E M S and, and law enforcement.
Ah, okay.
Saint Patrick's Day.
Oh, yeah. They're all drinking green beer on that day, right?
Right.
Yeah, they're all turning green.
And vomiting.
Alright. Anything else you?
No, sir.
For us to just, to discuss. What all does the, does the Bureau of V M S or whatever it's called and what do they do?
Yeah, they, that's a good question.
Good question, Mr. Chair. So, uh, the bureaus is, uh, responsible for licensure of agencies and personnel. So every ye- uh, two years, we as individuals have to submit our continuing education record to the Bureau. They go through and check that, make sure that we have all the requirements to, for relicensure. At the agency level, they come out and do an inspection where a person physically shows up and they check two or three ambulances to make sure that we have all the equipment we're supposed to have. Um, outside of that, they, uh, they're responsible for the time-sensitive, uh, emergency committee that there, there are three, uh, time-sensitive emergencies that they track and, uh, give, uh, leveling criteria to different facilities and even E M S agencies for, uh, stroke, trauma and cardiac. They, uh, used to actually, back in the eighties, they would go out and educate these more rural agencies, but they, and they had regional offices and they had to consolidate things in the nineties and they stopped doing that. And that's been a big point of contention in the, on the task force, the sustainability task force. There's a lot of those rural agencies, you know, where you've got, they're all volunteers. They would like to have that education component back. Uh, but it's a matter of funding. They just don't have the funds to be able to, to pull that off, so.
So it's primarily a licensing organization?
Yeah, regulatory and license.
Put them in occupational licensing.
We thought about, that's been talked about. That's one, one option.
You could move them over there?
Could.
Because they got a whole variety of, they let, they take care of the chiropractors and electricians and.
If that's their pri- if that, if that is their primary focus.
That's the main thing they do is, is licensing, then.
I know, uh, in speaking to the, the Bureau Chief, Tony Danny, you know, he, he feels like they do a lot more than just licensure and, and there's certainly some of that, but you gotta find a place for them to live if they can't live in D H W.
Well, they can do that if they're under occup- because, because occupational licensing, they do some of that kind of stuff as well.
So that's, that's an option.
I think that'd be an easy one, too.
Yeah. And I think, uh, you know, Representative Tanner, uh, he's just looking for a place to put him and then he's willing to go down to L S O and and have a bill written. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think that'd work. That'd work best, actually.
Okay.
It's better.
Yeah, well.
Even than H W.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else needs to be brought before the board? If not, we're adjourned.
Alright, thank you.